Do I have the motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Uh, next on our agenda is recognitions.
Okay. I think we've got three tonight. Uh, one, Valerie, you want to present this one?
Sure. So just read it?
Yes, why not?
Okay. So I nominated Josh Oaks because he's always bailing me out of one fix or another. I wrote, "I would like to nominate Josh Oaks for employee of the month. As a Read 180 teacher, my students and I rely heavily on technology to utilize the program with fidelity. Josh is quick to arrive and problem solve when things don't work as they should. I truly appreciate his quiet demeanor when he is trying to fix an issue while I'm working with students. His willingness to help, friendly disposition, and considerable tech knowledge make him an asset to the Warren County School District."
The results?
Thank you.
Well done. And thank you for nominating him.
My pleasure. I hope he sticks around.
Um, and every year we have, uh, those who win are nominated and has received our employee of the month go into an employee of the year. And, uh, we've done that for the last few years and we've given each employee that's chosen a hundred dollars, uh, as being the employee of the year. So this year, uh, last month, I think Joselle was our employee of the month and she has now been chosen as our employee of the year, so. Those dollars will be in your next check. So, all right. Spend it, spend it as you will. And then, uh, our, uh, class, our certified employee of the year is Dwayne Farnum. Uh, he was employee of the month, uh, several months back and of course, Dwayne is our band director and he is over at the high school, uh, directing the band. So, uh, he, he's our employee of the year for certified employees and we'll make sure we get this to him and, uh, appreciate all the hard work. I saw the, when we had our retirement, uh, band quit last, uh, oh, Tuesday night. Band was over there and they were, we were starting at five and they were just coming in to eat, uh, eat dinner, I guess, or supper. And, uh, when we were leaving, they were still out on the field, uh, practicing. So I think there's about ninety-six, he said, in the band this year, so we appreciate them. So appreciate Dwayne, appreciate Joselle for all the hard work.
Okay, next on their agenda is operations.
Thank you, Chairman. Our first item is the Tunnel of Tower, or Tunnel to Towers event. We had that, uh, a few months back at the high school. Appreciate the board doing that. Mr. Clark is, I don't know if Mr. Clark is here. He, he, Mr. Clark works for the ambulance service and he texted me and said he was on a call, but he would be here as soon as he could. And as soon as he gets here, we will, he will give you an update on that event. And he'd also like to continue to do that on an annual basis, so he has a date and we will try to get the board to approve that as well. But that went very, very well. Next item is the RJ Young piggyback with county government. In your documents there, you can see, we, we currently have one more year on our lease with Xerox, which is the XMC, uh, lease. And you can see that yearly, our lease is about thirty-nine thousand and six dollars. And with overages, we get charged, uh, that amount for the overages if we make more copies than we're allowed. So we spend annually throughout the school system about fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars in copies throughout the, the year. Mr. Haley, uh, did, uh, went out and looked to improve the county's situation with RJ Young. And, uh, I think, uh, found the, uh, lease that they are using through, uh, Metro Nashville.
Yes, it's a piggyback bid.
So, uh, the county has piggybacked off of that and we are able to piggyback off of their bid. So we, uh, got with, uh, XMC and RJ Young is willing to buy out the last year of the contract as well as the overages to, you know, to get our business, which that yearly lease you can see would be a twenty, twenty-two thousand, seven eighty-ones with, seven eighty-one with a lower overage rate. So it'll be for next year, forty-two thousand, seven eighty-five. So with the overages in the lease, it'll save us twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, uh, next year in copying. So, uh, I said, you know, if they're willing to buy out that lease and the overages and we're saving twenty-five thousand, what's not, what's not to like about that? So, uh, so I would just ask the board to approve us piggybacking on that, uh, that lease and, uh, then we'll go through the proper steps with the county.
Bobby, you have, like that motion?
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, having a discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Appreciate county executive pulling that together. That's, that's a win-win for everybody.
Sounds like some money, so.
So, uh, we'll, we'll get that, get that started. Next item is, uh, Red Cross uses, uh, emergency shelter facilities, uses our facilities as an emergency, emergency shelter, uh, if need be. We have to renew those, uh, contracts, I think it's on a three-year basis. So in your packet is the, uh, agreement, uh, for approval there. And I think Robbins looked at that and everything should be good, uh, with that. So we just need the approval of the board to allow the Red Cross, if needed, to use our facilities as a shelter.
I want a motion.
We approve the Red Cross use of the facility.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? All right, motion carries.
Next item, we have our salary schedules. Uh, you have those in your packet. Uh, we have both the salary schedule, uh, for certified staff and classified staff. Due to the passage of our budget and appreciate, again, county executive and Ms. Evans, one of our county commissioners being here, that, um, we're able to give a two-thousand-dollar increase to our certified staff and also a thousand-dollar increase to our classified staff. So that salary schedule is reflective of that. And that is, uh, the two-thousand dollars and the thousand dollars is above their, uh, two-thousand and eighteen, nineteen salary. So it's not two-thousand dollars added to the salary schedule that, above that, but it's two-thousand dollars total from their eighteen, nineteen salary, which is what we've done for several years, readjusting that salary schedule. So, uh, I just asked the board to approve those salaries retroactive to July one.
And I'm chairperson, I, I, I would enjoy the privilege of moving for adoption of the administration's recommended salary schedules effective July one, twenty nineteen.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
One, one additional item is in the salary schedule, as we've discussed before, we, we did move up the starting salary to, from thirty-eight to thirty-nine. Took the opportunity to do that and, you know, we felt like it, that, that makes us a little bit more competitive, uh, you know, by raising that starting salary a thousand dollars. So, uh, hopefully that will, that will help us down the road there. So that's the only change that, that's in there.
Bobby, did I read somewhere that, um, that we ranked like sixty-second out of, what, about a hundred and forty fantasy school districts?
I think, uh.
What, what was the real number?
I pulled that from the TA website for eighteen, nineteen, and we ranked sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
On starting salary with a thirty-eight thousand dollar starting salary. If, if everything held true and we moved up to thirty-nine, um, that would put us at about forty-seven, forty-eight in starting salary.
Well, that's if everybody else stayed the same.
That's if everybody else stayed the same.
But it's a moving goalpost, so.
Everybody else is a moving goalpost.
But still, it's something we needed to address and, you know, I, I know this whole board, uh, joins me in heartily complimenting and thanking the majority of the Warren County Commission, uh, for taking what I thought was a courageous vote, uh, on the side of responsibility and, uh, progress and moving our school system forward. So I just, I know all of you would, uh, join me in applauding, uh, the county commission for taking that vote. It's thirteen to ten.
Absolutely.
Barely passed, but for the thirteen, thank you.
Absolutely. And it, it, it does get us in line with, uh, you know, like, again, if no, if nothing else stayed the same, uh, those that we compete with, uh, Murfreesboro City Schools is forty thousand, nine forty-two, White County is forty thousand, four seventy-five. Rutherford County is forty thousand, one hundred and forty. Putnam County's thirty-nine, seven ninety-four. So those that we compete for teachers, you know, in the upper conbel and we're.
We're in the race.
We're in the race, yes.
How many, what, about a hundred and forty districts?
Forty-two, hundred, well, a hundred and forty-seven.
Okay.
A hundred and forty-seven districts.
And that's sort of a proliferation over in Shelby County.
Yes, yes. It's made several districts I want, yes.
Okay, any more discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Staff fingerprinting, last month, we, I talked about, uh, we were waiting on the state who is working on trying to get a, a free, uh, background check and fingerprinting for staff since the new law came in place a year ago. And they said that's going to be several years down the road. So we need to go ahead and, and get started, you know, with that process for those who have not had fingerprints, which anybody that has been hired, I think, since at least two thousand and maybe ten or even earlier than that, have had fingerprints done. They have to have that as a part of their package that is required. And then, uh, even our pre-k teachers, that was required for them, they have to do that. So, and then it's, after you get it done, it's on a five-year cycle. Every five years, you have to have it redone. So my suggestion on this, if the board agrees, is to, uh, set aside, uh, we've got ten thousand dollars on other contracts that we can set aside for fingerprinting and we'll start that process and then we'll just gradually continue until we get everybody finished. But at least that would get us started, so. If you, if the board's okay with that, we just need approval to build that route.
Motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I, I am going to vote in support of that motion, but I, I think Bobby, you and I have talked about the possibility in looking at the economic feasibility of maybe getting four or five onboard system employees through the, I guess there's a fingerprinting school and certification, doing it in-house. I mean, we're not, in, in the big scheme of things, ten thousand dollars is not such a big slice of our total expenses, but it was, you know, just, just a thought. But, uh, maybe in later years to see if we could do it in-house.
Well, we've looked, we, we did look at that and, uh, you know, I think now closest place is Murfreesboro or, you know, Cookville. But that, that's something we have, you know, looked at if it's cost feasible to do that.
Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so to make good use of Mr. Clark's time, uh, we're happy, happy you're here and don't want to hold you up. So, uh, this is Mr. Clark and he'll give us an update on the, on the run and plans for next year.
Well, that was, it was perfect timing. Thank you. I told, uh, Deputy Russo, sorry, I just kind of looked, was like, I see an empty seat, maybe I can go in there. First off, thank you all very much for your support and for your approval of the facility or use of the facilities. Amazing success, especially for the first year. Had two-hundred-and-twenty-two paid entrance. Uh, and what I find so interesting about that was there were seven states represented. We actually had a gentleman from France that came and ran. Uh, and outside of Warren County in terms of Tennessee locales, we had twenty-four different, uh, cities that were represented from outside of Warren County. So a lot of great participation from people that brought it in. So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. We were able to raise, based on my calculations, twenty thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents for the foundation. So again, I, I just, I can't, I can't tell you how excited I am about that and how pleased I am, especially for our first year. So what we would like to do with the board's blessing is, uh, Mr. Cox and I, first off, thank you for inviting me here. Mr. Cox and I have spoken a little bit about it. We would like to request approval to do again. Uh, and we're looking at June sixth of next year. The issue we ran into this year was, um, a conflict with the ACT. I've spoken to Ms. Brown and, uh, Mr. Childers and some of those folks that are involved in that and we want to back it up a week so that we don't have it on the campus at the same time, um, that they're having that next year. And they, they assured me that the, the ACT is the week following. So if we have it the earlier week, then that, that should be no conflict, so. Again, thanks for having me. Thanks so much for your support of the foundation and, uh, and if you're willing, we'd love to come back and do it again.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Well, thank you. Yeah, appreciate you, appreciate you organizing that. I know there's, it was a good event.
Well, it was, it was a labor of love, so thank you all very much. Great participation, so it was very much the community, not just me, so.
All right, well, we'll do it again next year.
I don't mean to run in and run out, but I'm going back to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the, uh, I think the next item, uh, is our Trinity Three computer lease. And, uh, this is, again, uh, very thankful and, uh, that the county commission also appropriated in that, in the tax increase for schools, the opportunity to, uh, get into this lease for upgrading our computers. The lease that you had there was for a combination of Chromebooks and desktops. And I talked to Katrina this afternoon and she wanted to see if we could hold off on voting on this because she thinks that we might need to maybe relook at the number of teacher computers that we have in there. So, uh, I told her that we would, if it's okay with the board, we'll just table this till the August meeting and let her re, you know, reevaluate everything and make sure we're sound on the, what we get. So we'll, we'll bring that back up at the Au- August meeting and make sure everything's good on that. Next item, we discussed, uh, I think at some point, uh, Mr. Willmore is here. But, uh, currently, we're in the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association, uh, with our community. And we did have, uh, an item that came up last year about homeschool students and how that fit into our policy. And we've researched that and, you know, if, if we want to continue to be in the Tennessee Middle School Association, we would have to follow the same rules that we do with our high school, as T double S double A. So that would mean that homeschool students, you know, would be able to try out for a, a team or a program. You know, doesn't guarantee them to make the team, uh, but just like high school students, they have opportunity to try out. So, uh, so that's the discussion tonight. Todd may want to say, you know, something else about that, but, uh, you know, I think he feels that we need, you know, it'd be good to stay in the, uh, in the association. So if you've got any comments or, uh, or anything, then.
Don't really have any comments per se. The, uh, I don't perceive it being a huge issue. I mean, we've, we've had zero homeschool students. Applied to participate at the high school level. Uh, do you know, we, we probably will have the one next year for the middle school, these, these across country and, and track student athlete. But there are a host of things that they have to complete prior to August one to even be eligible. So they can't just, in September, decide, hey, I'm homeschool, I want to go participate in athletics. They haven't met those criteria prior to that. Mood point anyway, so, um, yeah, I, I just feel like the Middle School Athletic Association is a, is a, a good program for our K eight and our middle schools. And it leads, I mean, it, it follows the same guidelines that we do in high school. It, it allows them to participate in, or have the opportunity to participate for state championships, which they've never been able to do at that level. And they're only going to add state championships in, in other sports as, as the years, uh, proceed. So I think, looking at it from that perspective, I, I think it's a, it's a, it'd be positive for us to stay in it. But, you know, I also understand the board's policy on the homeschool issue and if that's the way we want to continue, I understand that as well, so.
So there would be not any more liability on us than?
No.
No, we, we would follow the same way as, as the T double S double A, which follows that rule. And, you know, it's, it's, the way I understand it too, it's an annual renewal.
Right.
So if, you know, if, we decided next year we didn't want to be in it for a certain reason and, you know, we could always just not renew. You know, I, I, I have my own feelings about, you know, the supervision part of that and things of that type. But I, I understand Todd's, you know, rationale on that and, you know, I, I trust that and, you know, we, if the board wants to stay in it for a year and see how it goes, then I, you know, my perspective, I don't have any, any problem with it. But, uh, like I said, we've, we've not had any, any to apply at the present, so.
Well, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of staying with the, uh, Middle School Athletic Association at the state level. There, there's a, there's another aspect to this and there's always a discussion of, of the homeschool or private school students participating in, the public school systems athletic program. But that issue is that the parents of those students are also Warren County taxpayers. And they're helping to pay for the facilities, uh, in that sense. And so, I, I mean, that's, I don't know whether that's a very weighty issue, but I think it's an issue. I think it's a consideration.
And I, and I did do some research on counties around us that do the, you know, the same thing. White County, you know, allows their students to, you know, play, uh, I know Teleoma does, I think Coffee County does. You know, and that, that, that's kind of, you know, I, I guess I've changed my opinion a little bit, you know, you know, from when we first discussed that. I still think there's some supervision things that, I don't know, that I necessarily agree with. You know, I think that one would be, would be the caveat, that if a student, you know, was playing on our athletic team, then they play by our rules, just like any other student. You know, if, if, uh, you know, if the coach has rules on their team, they violate those rules and that student is dismissed from the team. Just because they're not in our school system doesn't mean they can't, you know, they play by the team rules. So as long as that is, uh, in place, you know.
That is by the, by the rules, the, um, T double S double A rules and the middle schools too, as I read them.
As well as the liability question that you asked, that they, the parent does have to provide that liability insurance. That would not go on us.
And, and then the other thing, you know, that I know would probably come up is, you know, playing time. That always comes up. You know, if a student is now is a homeschool student and they're coming in and a student that's in our school system and that affects their playing time, then that could be, you know, an issue as well, you know, so.
Well, the other side of the coin is if you want the biggest talent pool you can get.
Yeah.
The other side of the coin.
I understand that too. I just wish they all just come to our school system and wouldn't worry about it.
Well, a lot of times homeschool children have left our system because they didn't have a positive environment or a, a bad situation. And, you know, they come into, they play, and I don't think there'll be very many. But, you know, what if they get a positive environment and they, a, a good, uh, they, they like the way that people treat them, a positive environment, a good role model, and they come back to public school? So that can always happen.
Right. That's opening a door.
Yeah.
And, and I think just because too, uh, we, we worry about the playing time, where if you've got the talent, play, whether you're homeschool or public school, if our coaches, you know, and, and I, I trust that they are being fair about that, then we, we shouldn't have an issue with that. But there's always going to be that issue even if they're all in public schools, so.
Sure.
As long as, as our coaches keep that in mind and be fair and play according to the talent, then we should be okay.
Will, uh, this require a policy change for us?
No, I checked it all and it wouldn't because we're, uh, you know, in essence, if we're in the association, it's just like the T double S double A. You know, if we're a member of the.
So basically, this is only going to affect the middle school and the high school and no one else?
Only the middle school because the high school's already under that rule. By state law, if, um, if T double, if we're in T double S double A, then we have to go by their rules, which say if we're a member, we have to accept homeschool students as far as trying eligibility. So the middle school state, what's the acronym? M?
T M S A A.
You heard it. You heard it from him. That follows the same rules for the middle school age. So it's not really our policy that rules that, it's the membership in the organization. So we wouldn't have to change our policy.
That's on, that's on the same, middle school would only be the school that'd be, to be affected.
Well, the K eight schools.
Are they, are the other K eights in it?
The people that can play at the middle.
They're co-opting at the middle school, yes.
Okay, so.
So their basketball would not be affected by it.
Okay, so like Dursley's basketball would not be affected, Center Towns would not be affected. It'd be only the middle school, uh, Warren County Middle School.
I need to verify that, but I, that's the way I interpreted it.
Because that's the reason I was asking is, the reason I was asking that, that the middle school is only going to be affected for the student that wanted to go there.
Right.
Or students. Because, but their policy would not change for the K eight schools, the sound, the county would be the same.
Right.
So if we kept wanting to go, want to go to county school to participate, they could not.
Right. Why, unless there's.
Just clarifying that up.
Yeah, this is unless there's something different that.
We might want to double check on that, but that's my understanding.
I'm looking at the homeschool policy right now, but it doesn't specifically say anything about that, but, uh.
Okay.
But I can, don't check that.
Okay.
At least it's to those teams that wouldn't be playing in the middle school. Cause like, they can play tennis, right? Or they can play tennis or soccer or other sports that aren't at their homeschool at.
At the middle school.
The middle school. If they're in the K eights.
I understand that, but I'm talking about if you had wanted to come to one of our outlines, Apple Adventure School, and they want to play basketball.
Okay, it shouldn't affect basketball.
Yeah, it should just be at the middle school.
Okay.
And if we find something different out, we can always bring it back to the table.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm going to move, if we need a motion on this, to approve, uh, continuing membership in the, um, State Middle School Association.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, further discussion? Okay. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Um, the, uh, just for your information, uh, in your packet, uh, we've updated the, uh, our suicide prevention protocol. Candace kind of is in charge of, uh, manning that protocol for us. And, and I think they updated it to the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Documents and Forms, uh, which, uh, we've used in the past, I think. But that's just, you know, really for your information and this is the document that, that we would be using if there is a, you know, an issue that we need to address, uh, in the school. So just wanted you to have that information. If you've got any questions, I'm sure Candace could probably answer those.
I just hope we just strongly urge the teachers and counselors and things to look for, for suicide symptoms and things. We come off of summer law with. We come off of summer law with some things, suicide, the drugs and all this. So that they just be, you know, almost highly trained to just point them out almost, you know, that we can, can help them.
So we'll share, we have always tried to let them know that there is a policy and there is a protocol that we follow. But this year in particular, we are doing this, we call it the Summer Road Show, where we're talking a lot about social emotional learning. And part of one of our breakouts is every adult that works in Warren County Schools is hearing it at each school. We're doing that these two weeks. And we're just going through the protocol, even though they won't do all of the counseling part, but we want them to see from the beginning to the end what the counselor will do, so that they'll kind of be in the know. So yes, thank you.
That sounds like a proactive stance, and I think that's where we need to be. Just be out in front of the issue. You know, I always ask the question about our resources in terms of the number of counselors and their, I guess their professional preparation in this particular field of their work. Are we, are we adequately staffed or?
Well, we would always think we would need more people like that. We just, we have a lot of kids with a lot of needs. I mean, that's, it's hard. We're really working this year trying to get those MOUs with the, to have those mental health counselors being at our schools too. So we're hoping that that'll help. I will say the school counselors we have are excellent. We worked with them on Monday and went through the whole protocol. And so that everybody's hearing the same thing and giving out the same information. And they were very positive about it. And they've been sitting in our session with us to kind of help to show this is what we'll do at our school. You know, let them know where the forms are and all that kind of stuff.
Well, one thing, Ms. Martin referred to the TSBA Summer Law Institute. And one, one of the many takeaways from that was that there, there is a movement among not just the professionals and the attorneys involved in this to move our state legislature to stronger funding for psychologists and counselors. But they did make the point, we need to build up the grassroots. We need our legislators, our state senators and representatives here from the people, that this is, this is a high need area. When they go back into session in January, they need to be thinking about it.
And we're also doing, training each individual school has, has contacted Suicide Prevention Network to come in and do individual training at their school. And just as part of being proactive, this is a perfect segue into our next one that's not on here. But Ms. Dodd is going to update you on, you know, we have a, a tip line that, that we have a text to tip where that's already in place. And then also we're, have a monitoring system that we're working with right now to try to make sure it's working correctly with a vendor to capture anything that's on our email system or communication that comes through our network. But one of the things that Vicki researched and brought to the table was an app, a Stop It app. And we've contracted with them, board approved it last, last month, and I know you're aware of that. But I wanted her, now that it's active, I wanted her to kind of roll that out for you and tell you a little bit more about it.
We are live. I trained some principals yesterday. I plan to train more as soon as we can work out time. This is just a small little handout to show you what it looks like on your cell phone. And I'll show you what mine looks like also. Stop It, research and studies tell us that kids will report, just not face to face. So that's one thing that caught my eye with this app was in grade six through 12, kids have the smartphones. They have them readily available. And this app allows them to download it for free from the App Store or Google Play or whichever store they use. And we have license for every school that serves grade six through 12. We did, we licensed for those middle school kids who are more likely not to talk to an adult. So this is Warren County Middle Schools. They put our logo on it and it is just very simple to use. That's what I gave you. Once we pass this screen, it goes to what you have, that simple question, what would you like to report? They can report bullying. They can report an issue that's important to them. They can report suicide of a friend or if they're thinking of things like that. Then the second one is they can upload a photo or a video of any incident they want us to see. They can provide their name, but it's optional. They do not have to provide their name. There, and then they have to tell us, it is required, where did this happen? Where did this take place? That's a required question that must be answered. Then at the bottom, they just toggle over that they understand that if they submit a fake report, there are issues that are going to, to come to them.
Consequences.
They hit submit. At the time the student hits submit on the app, Mr. Cox and I automatically get a text and an email. And the principal of the school gets a text and an email that a report has been submitted. It gives us the link. We can go into the homepage of the app, look at the report, read the submissions and make an act on it at that time. And that's what's in the second page that I gave you is what the administrator log looks like whenever we get the report. And I tell you, we've practiced about four times with four different schools and it works. Now, here's the glory of this. If an administrator, say at Irving College, because Rachel and I did this together yesterday, gets a report, Rachel can automatically reply to that student, whether she knows who it is or whether she doesn't know who it is. Tell me more. I'll see you. I'll, she can't contact them, but she can text back and forth and have a live conversation with the person automatically upon receipt. It worked. We tried it. So the students will be given access codes. We have access codes for every school to make an individual. These will be everywhere, all over the building. And once the, the student downloads the app and puts in their access code, unless they log out for some reason, all they have to do with the app is go directly back to Stop It, hit it, and it's still there. And they're still logged in, unless they log themselves out. Now, if they log themselves out, if they report and log themselves out, we cannot have that live conversation. But if they stay logged in, we could have that live conversation with them. The principal can. So it does give us opportunity, I'm going to be working with Candace and Robin more. There's lots of, of parts to this. It does give us opportunity to be able to give them resources outside, like put in the Suicide Network phone number and put in other things like that. So I just need to sit down with them and get it done. The more I learn about it, the more I need to find, to put into our app. But it is going to be readily available for any student, grade six, 12 in Warren County for the year. And we get everything we need to complete our OCR reports on bullying. Everything is managed through a, a document system that the reports can be downloaded and emailed to anyone that needs them. And they are cumulative, so we can see how many reports were made, have we followed up with them, whether it was a bullying situation or whether it wasn't. So there, like I said, there is a wealth of things on this app that I think will be another layer of help.
This, this also was rolled out at summer law. There was also a discussion of this. This is impressive.
Very.
I think Vicki went out and researched that and, you know, kind of did delay work on that. Some other counties were using that as well. So I appreciate her, you know, doing that and, you know, pulling that together. So now we have, you know, an app where students can report. We have a text to tip line where they can text a tip. It goes straight to an SRO. And, you know, hopefully we can make sure our system, our filter is working well so that we can catch anything that way. So we're doing everything we can to try to give an opportunity for students to reach out if, if they have a, have an issue, so.
Is any of this information streamed accessible by the general public on the, on the internet?
No.
It's a totally closed system?
Yes.
And we would roll it out in the community with, you know, telling them it is available, but I want it accessible to have the opportunity to set up their school the way they want it set. And when we roll it out to the kids, we'll do an article and roll it out to the community that it is available and it is accessible. Because I want parents to know, if their kids are going to pull something out of the App Store, I want them to know what they're pulling.
So each student that's using it would, would be a registered user?
Yes.
It didn't work really well because I, they were training in here and I was at my office and I had to come in here and tell them to stop it. Because my phone was, I'd get text messages about every two seconds. So it works well.
Okay, good.
So that's, that's, that's all we have. Madam Chairman?
Okay.
I want to, Madam Chairperson, I just like to say before we got out of the operations report that I want to compliment Mr. Cox and his staff and particularly the maintenance staff. They gave tremendous support to the two free community health fairs that were held in Warren County that served hundreds of people. Many of them hadn't seen a doctor or a dentist in years or decades. The Ascension St. Thomas Health Fair was held at Charlie Dalton Gym. Ascension St. Thomas, they bring, they bring everything with them. But, but they did use the gym and I think that worked extremely well. The Ishya Yoga Institute had their, what, eighth or ninth annual health fair, but it was at a three-star mall. And Mr. Cox and the maintenance department provided tables and chairs and other facilities. So just want, just want to compliment you all.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. We're happy to support that.
Great.
Mr. Zeglin, you have curriculum and achievement.
Okay, I have so many things on my desk. Let me, let me go around to it. Okay. Let's, we've got two items, policy items, set for second reading. The first one is DM, noneducational funds. And, okay, noneducational funds. We passed this on first reading at the last meeting and just if there's any questions or if Robin wants to add anything.
The assignment, we have a money changes on that one for second reading.
So what, what this amounts to is just controls over the receipt, accounting and disbursement of noneducational funds. Were you talking about booster club activities, things like that?
Well, they're more for students or teacher incentive accounts.
No.
The new law that came out about collecting funds and how you would do that. And our auditors provided us with documentation that we need to use. And this fund, this policy is just the policy that we have to go by to collect funds for teacher incentives.
Specifically, it looks like, you know, for bereavement, award recognition, and baskets and play around would be the items that it can be used for. And they can't use school, student funds for that. It has to be specified collection by adults.
Here again, it also just promotes transparency and how those funds are handled. So Madam Chairperson, I'm going to move for adoption on second reading of DM, noneducational funds.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, just one other item under curriculum and achievement. Second reading on policy J C C E, alternative school programs. And we, I think we discussed this pretty thoroughly at the, at the last meeting. So I'm going to move for adoption on second reading of J C C E.
Second, do you have a second? A second. First and a second. Any discussion? I would just say that we're probably going to have to come back and amend this one again per new law, but we need to go ahead and amend it to get schools started until at such time as we get some guidance from, because the state DOE is supposed to give us some guidance on, as you guys may recall.
The suspension policy?
Yeah, the suspension part of that.
This, this also deals with exceptional students and how, how we deal with that in the student discipline context.
And that's why we need to go ahead and get it done for the start of school. Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Mr. Bennett, facilities and resource.
Okay, and facilities, Mr. Hill brought up, up to date on the projects at Bobby Ray and West. And they're on schedule at this time. He discussed with us about what the fire marshal had to move, had to ask them to do to be in compliance with elevator and stuff. And also he had talked about the security upgrades at Hickory Creek and Middle School and High School on the west view, that they're complete now. We also voted to, on the Ag Barn to rebid it. We also voted to remove the circular planter at Warren County Middle School. Mr. Cox brought us up to date on the ESG at the Warren County Middle School, the drop ceilings on the bottom floor and the grid on the second floor is prepared for the drop ceilings. Also, we talked about the, our UNICEP income plate at the Irving College in Dearborn and also at the middle school. And we also talked about that, that Warren County Middle School right now, we're using the old choler because the new hadn't been installed yet. Also from Mr. Alman, he recommended, I would like to recommend at this time the fitting of the fencing and stuff at Warren County Middle School of a total of not to exceed $4,775.
What's motion?
We need some motions. You need a motion.
I need, yeah, I need, I made a motion for us to.
Rebe it?
Okay.
So if you want to, if you want to do the Debra project, then we can go back and get the, we can go back up and get the Ag Barn and, and the planter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we've got to do that. But we can do the, we can do the Debra project first, the fencing project, and then go back and get those two.
So you made the motion, Mr. Bennett?
Right.
Okay. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, second, any discussion? Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, then we need to get the Ag Barn, the, we need a motion to rebid, rebid the Ag Barn.
Okay, I'm, I did make a motion to rebid the Ag Barn.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll need one to remove the planter too.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion that we do remove the circular planter at Warren County Middle School.
I'll second that with a personal request that we think about putting out an appropriate tree or some other landscaping that's more.
If we do a tree, I, I'm just thinking about the roots and growing on.
Well, you, you allow big, you know, reasonably large area around it. You don't just pave right up to it. You have a little grassy area. And this, this is just to kind of green up the campus a little bit. I think we would agree the campus could benefit from a little greening. What do you think?
I don't know. I, I don't need to think about that one.
So we have.
So we have a motion and a second and some discussion, any further discussion?
What, what was Mr. Tidwell thinking?
Uh, I think, you know, his, he just wanted to remove the, you know, the planter and, you know, it's kind of an eyesore and it's falling apart. And, you know, he didn't make any recommendation about what to do with it. And sooner or later, I, you know, we'll probably redo that, you know, parking lot anyway. So, uh, I didn't have any discussion with him about replacement, it was just removal.
Well, it just has weeds in it now and.
Well, well, let's just, let's just right now remove it, and then we can always decide what we're going to do.
What, we put back in there?
Well, I need to withdraw my second.
What'd you say?
The other reason that planter was there was, you know, there was a tree, a big juniper tree from that big house that used to sit there, and they didn't want to cut the tree down. And then the tree blew down in a storm, and so nothing's ever really gone there much since then, except weeds. So, you know, the purpose of that was to save that tree, because it was a rare tree. And then the tree is gone, so it really serves a lot of purpose now, so it's.
Well, I, I will, I will revise my second, I will accept that change. However, just, just be aware, I will come back. Some greening in that spot.
We have a motion and second to remove the circular planter at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think we've had discussions, so, those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Now, I'll go back to the Dearborn project.
Okay.
Uh, which is a construction of the new dish at Dearborn. And, uh, we, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the project not exceed $10,000.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion?
However, what happens if it does?
Well, we'll have to come back to the board on that. If, and he, Mr. Grissom said, when I talked to him, you know, if, if he, he doesn't expect to run into any trouble there, but he doesn't know what's buried. When they built the school, back out closer to the end of the property, they did bury some of the debris. So if he hits, starts hitting debris, then he could run over that. If it's, if he doesn't hit debris, it'll probably be less than $10,000. So, but I told him, I said, you know, we've got $10,000 in a contingency. If we, if it looks like we're going to go over that, then we need to bring that back to the board for approval and decide what we want to do.
So each time?
I'm sure, go ahead.
Each time we, we build and have this contingency set up and we don't use it, it still just sits there for that school?
No, it goes back in, when the project ends, it comes back to us. And it'll come back into our, in our budget.
But how we know then we had this there in their contingency, if when it was finished, it came back?
Well, the contingency, when we bid the project, I don't know, I can't remember how much the, the project was, but if it was, let's say $20,000, and then we had a $10,000 contingency, we would put $30,000 aside. You know, so if we didn't use the $10,000, the project just cost us 20.
I know, but you're saying then after that amount was left, the contingency, say whatever 12 or 14 was left, then it just goes back into our general?
It goes back into our maintenance budget, because that's where the funds came from to do the project, capital projects.
So I guess if it goes back, then how do, we just keep records somewhere that, that amount came back from that project?
Right, we do, we just keep that in the account, you know, to know that that came back in. And if, if we need to use that on a roof project down the road, or wherever else we need to allocate it, you know, and like I said, the, the, uh, project at, let's see, there was one, they did this, a similar project, he just completed a similar project at, uh, Eastside for drainage out there. We didn't have to use any of, having troubles, so we didn't have to use any of the contingency there. So, and there was a $10,000 contingency there. So we usually, hopefully, we don't have to get into that, but, you know, you never know what you're going to get into. But yeah, that's, that's what happens, it's.
What, what Mr. Grissom, the contractor said is if, if he runs into any kind of problems underground that are not visible, a good example of this, many, many years ago, uh, at Central Church of Christ, we were getting ready for Vacation Bible School, and we wanted to put a sign, temporary sign in the front lawn. And we thought this was going to be an easy job with a pair of pole total diggers and dig a couple of holes. Come to find out, the construction people who built the auditorium in 1972, at the end of the day, if they had some leftover concrete, they'd just wheel it out there and pour it. We had to rent a jackhammer. And I had a good experience running a jackhammer, that'll, that'll wear you out. But, but that, that's, I mean, I, I think that's what Mr. Grissom's thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, and then that's, a lot of, all of the projects, like building projects that we, we've done, you know, that money, the bond money goes into an account at the bank, and it's interest-bearing. So you earn a little interest on that money till you draw it down. And then if there's any leftover in the project, then it goes back to the county or whoever funded it. I think we, I think, I think we got a note, motion and a second.
We have a second.
And this is on, uh, the Dearborn project, okay? So we've had discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, uh, the next, uh, thing is that we have $5,000 contingency at Warren County Middle School, uh, is, we recommended that we spend $4,775 to changing the, the gates and stuff at the middle school. I still make that motion.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is Bobby Ray. We had, uh, the deletion portion of fencing, which resulted in a, in a deduction of $2,975. And we made recommendations to change it from galvanized finish to black vinyl coating, which would, uh, be $2,115. And that would result in a, in a savings of $960. I make the motion that we spend $2,015 at Bobby Ray.
I want to second that, but with the, with the footnote that we were going to leave the color of the vinyl to be determined by the administration.
Okay, a motion, have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I believe that got.
You guys got it all, didn't it? Got it all.
Madam Chairperson, before we adjourn, I just want to, for the sake of promoting our new, uh, machine technology program at Warren County High School. I was talking to Randy England, who's the instructor of machine technology at TCAT. And they have moved machines into place. I think you, you probably had a, had a hand in that. So we've got two mills and one lathe, or one lathe and two mills, whatever it is, and a surface grinder, uh, and some more equipment to be coming. But this is a, this is going to be a splendid partnership with Tennessee College of Applied Technology. And we want to do everything we can to get students and parents aware that machine technology is here, uh, and another dual enrollment opportunity, and what they call an early secondary option, or, whatever it is. But anyway, we're going to have machine technology, you know, to add to our welding technology, to our, add to our mechatronics.
Okay, anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. We're adjourned.
All right, my cue.